Welcome one, welcome all. We will have our invocation by the Reverend Craig Ott from the Chalice Christian Center. Welcome.
I invite you to pray with me. Almighty Creator God, all around us we see the evidences of your creative power in the amazing ways in which the fabric of this world is woven together in beauty and bounty. Teach us how to care for your world and bring your shalom of wholeness to every hill, valley, and shoreline. Holy God, we thank you for the gift of leadership gathered here. Please give them the wisdom and courage to make decisions that are in harmony with what is good for all people of the great city of Virginia Beach. May the tapestry of goodness and harmony that began in the water flood our streets and neighborhoods with peace and joy in the name of the God we claim. Amen.
Amen. And the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have the roll call?
Yes, sir, all present.
Okay, and we're gonna ask, can I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, vote is open.
I have a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, do I have a motion for certification of the minutes of the special formal session of April thirtieth, twenty nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Vote's open.
Sorry, one second. Now it's open. By a vote of ten to zero of Mr. Berlusconi saying you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay. Do I have a vote for the approval of the minutes of the special former section, session of May seventh, twenty seventeen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, no, seven. Twenty nineteen, oh my goodness, I am living in the past. Sorry us about that.
The past is always nice.
Mr. Jones, may I have your vote, please?
Aye.
It's still open, you can. By a vote of ten to zero of Mr. Berlusconi saying you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, could I have approval of the minutes of the formal and informal and formal sessions of May seventh, twenty nineteen, and special former, formal sessions of May fourteenth, twenty nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Vote's open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved those minutes as submitted.
Uh, thank you all, okay. Mr. Wilk, we have the consent agenda, please.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval on the consent agenda of the following items under ordinances and resolutions. Item three, ordinance to authorize a temporary encroachment into a portion of city right-of-way known as San Fiddler Road adjacent to thirty-five forty Sam Fiddler Road, ray four existing block pillars and two existing block walls, and that's consent for deferral to June eighteenth. Item four, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachment into a portion of city property known as Lake Joyce and the twenty-foot strip around Lake Joyce at the rear of four-four-one-seven Palace Point Road regarding rebuilding an existing bulkhead and to construct and maintain approximately ninety linear feet of vinyl bulkhead appear and sixteen feet of return wall. Under item six, ordinance to transfer item B, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars from the Federal Emergency Management Administration regarding reimbursed participating agencies of Virginia Task Four Two, Two, for cost related to hurricanes Florence and Michael.
Okay, could I have a discussion on planning?
Item one, under planning, Glassell S. Scott, Jr. for a street closure regarding an unimproved unnamed alley adjacent to the rear of a vacant parcel on Vanderbilt Avenue approximately three hundred and seventy-five square feet from Croatan Road, lot eighteen, block eighteen, Croatan Beach in the Beach District. Item four, Piney Grove Baptist Church for a modification of conditions, ray religious use at two-eight-oh-four Holland Road in Princess Sand District, and that's consent to defer on to June, June fourth. And so moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, do we, we have a motion in a second, the vote's open on the consent agenda.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor.
May I just make a comment?
Yes, Ms. Henley.
On this item, on for deferring it until the next meeting, I just want to say how really pleased and grateful I am that we are coming to, I hope, a final resolution on this. Unfortunately, because of delays in getting the lighting delivered and so forth manufactured and delivered, it was only installed about in the middle of last week, and I think we just need to make sure everything is, is working the way it's supposed to, and so that's the only reason I asked for deferral. I want all these loose ends tied up, and I hope on June fourth, we can report to everybody that everything's good.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Henley. Okay, at this point, we will proceed, I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representative or groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk for the record. First item up, under ordinances, one, ordinance to declare approximately eleven point seven acres of city property on Bonnie Road in excess of the city's needs and authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with the sale of property to Olympia Development Corporation, ray two professional office buildings and one multifamily residential buildings, structured parking units, and I understand there was a recommendation for deferral on this?
Two weeks, I understand.
Okay. Okay, first speaker?
I'm sorry, Mayor, so I need to address something real quick. We had four individuals sign up on Piney Grove Baptist Church, I was unaware of it when we were doing the consent agenda.
Okay.
Just don't know how we want, they were all in favor.
I think at the conclusion, they can speak.
Yeah, no, yeah, we will allow him to speak when the time comes.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay? No, no, not at the, that's fine, we'll be fine.
The first speaker for the H one is Conrad Shisventer. Conrad Shisventer.
Oh, there he is. Hey, Conrad.
And the next speaker will be Mrs. Marsh.
Welcome.
Hello, guys. Well, hello again, Virginia Beach City Council. You're all the authority here, so I, Conrad, your voice for Virginia Independent Politics, want to lobby the body for some no votes on this upcoming matter. And I'm a bit out of breath, so let me catch up a little bit. The reasoning is threefold: conservation, prevention, and government subsidized development. I enjoyed a lovely environmentally based town hall two Saturdays back with Virginia Beach Councilwoman Abbott and Councilman Moss, and highlighted Virginia Beach's special wetlands. In the name of conservation, I suggested no vote on developing this land, and instead manage it the way we protect our open spaces. Now, flooding is always one storm away, and Virginia Beach is already treading water. Overdeveloping on the flood hazard zone this wetland is will only expose Virginia Beach Government to increased flooding damage and flood dollars in the future. I suggest maintaining this wetland as an open space instead. Lastly, and a special, Michelle Riley approved, bless y'all's hearts, this plan requires an initial grant from EDIP in parking construction that the city may flow millions of dollars to. Remember, y'all just hiked our city's real estate, personal property, and user fee taxes. I suggest not blocking into immediately spending it to kickstart parking structures for business on a wetland. Now, I've supported selling city land toward private businesses before with the Princess Sand Hotel. Details on this plan push me against selling this land, so I suggest preserve it as an open space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marsh.
Welcome.
And after Mrs. Marsh is Virginia Wasserberg.
I come bringing visuals again, these are all just emailed to you. I could have died in the forty-six-hundred block of Bonnie Road. It was only through a miracle that I didn't. I was hit by a vehicle next to me that made an illegal U-turn, and it's marked "No Illegal U-Turns," and you all have these in your email box. My vehicle sustained almost six thousand dollars worth of damages, a large SUV, and the woman who hit me was eighteen and she had other accidents, but that's a very, very, very dangerous area to be thinking about expanding, and I want to tell you that I spoke to people in our transportation department today, and we've had eighty crashes there at Bonnie and Independence. It's a high-traffic area with a lot of accidents. Eleven of those crashes were injury crashes, and these are the last three years. It is considered that there are seventy-six thousand vehicles daily that go through Bonnie and Independence, that area right there. Seventy-six thousand vehicles, and you're gonna add two office buildings and residences there. It really seems futile, especially since it's the fifty-eighth worst traffic intersection out of three hundred and seventy-six in the city. And again, this is from our people in our departments here, VDOT. I'm also upset because we just had a tax hike of fourteen point five million dollars, and now you're turning around and you're looking at giving a developer eleven point seven million dollars? To me, somehow this doesn't wash. You take the money out of my pocket to turn around and give it to a developer almost immediately, and the worst thing of all is VDOT is just about to finish their study. They're doing a study on the interchange on Independence and two-sixty-four. They've been doing it for a year and a half, it's gonna be done sometime at the end of the summer, and I believe that we have Frank Papin in our planning department and our person in our transportation department who are aware of this, and they're working with Mr. Stringfeld from VDOT. It's really important to get these reports before we make these decisions because we may have to have a VDOT five-twenty-seven if you do something that's within three thousand feet of a interstate. So you really need to look at the details before you just push this through and give a developer another green light and take tax dollars from us citizens and cause maybe somebody else to nearly be killed on Bonnie Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Wasserberg. And after Ms. Wasserberg is Barbara Messner.
Welcome, Virginia.
Good evening, thank you. I do understand this matter is deferred, however, I do not understand why. It was not explained to me why it is deferred or if there would be another public hearing, so that is why I would like to speak tonight. I was at town when the public hearing was held on May seventh. I emailed you all very early this morning. This piece of property is in an AE FEMA-mapped special flood hazard zone. It also contains wetlands, and I have learned a little bit of history on the area today in that it, I believe the city has tried to develop it in the past and had trouble with that because of it being in wetlands. I'm in opposition to developing this piece of land for those two principled reasons. I do not believe that our city should be taking measures to develop in, in flood zones, and I do not believe that we should be developing our wetlands. And I did have an opportunity to speak with the engineer, the head engineer on this from American Engineering Today, and in the bookmarked agenda on the page that is labeled Exhibit A, it says that there are seven point five acres of usable land, and the engineer let me know that they're just saying seven point five. They really don't have any determination of that being legitimate because the soil samples have not been taken yet on this land, and not, and they won't know how much of the property is actually usable for development until those soil samples are done, and he let me know that, I guess, there's a debate as to who should pay for those soil samples, and I really believe that, that I would like to say that the city should pay for that. If the city would like to declare a piece of land excess for property, then I believe that it is the city's responsibility to pay for that, and I would be behind that if it wasn't in a wetland. But, you know, if, if that's the way you're gonna go, and you're gonna declare it excess, and you're gonna develop it, then in order for us to be a good city of yes, open for business, I think that that's the best thing to do is to let the developer know how much land they can actually develop here, and that's usable. But, you know, I really caution you about developing in wetlands. You set a precedence last year with Argos, and I know it's not the same thing, but you set that precedence last year not to develop in a flood zone and, and develop in a wetland, and I would appreciate that you continue that precedence for this, and maybe, maybe use the land for something else, like a park, or, you know, something of that nature, an open space area, put some food trucks there or something like that, you know, let's, let's, let's make it for residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Diana Howard.
Welcome.
Good evening. I don't think that monitor's working again tonight, it's kinda hard to see the speakers. This declaring of excess property is, is really getting old, and not only is it mixed-use, multifamily, family uses HUD money. We shouldn't be using HUD money for, for private projects, and the land is taken off the tax rolls, so we lose. Everything involving land requires a supermajority nine-two vote. And the conflicts on city land for lease, sale, and right-of-way. Jim Wood. Your mother was on planning, now Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority, your son was an associate, is an associate with Wilcox Savage. The family business JDNW does work for D'Varis, Nuzbaum, US Navy, Doug Ellis, now Venture Realty, Ron Ripley, et cetera. The conflict code is two-point-two-three-one-two-two. Mr. Tower was with Kaufman and Canoles, we hire Kaufman and Canoles over fifteen years. We need a two-month transition before new people start voting. Ms. Wilson, your statement of economic interest, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand income, Goodman Dixon Hughes, the CPA, your family CPA firm, and the also audit Town Bank. Mr. Jones, you were with Fulton Bank when they financed the construction part of the Cavalier Hotel. Almost everything is hotel, motel, and developer. Mr. Jones has taken money from Ron Ripley, Rosemary Wilson Breeden, John Atkinson, Ellis Gibson, which is now Venture, and Ms. Henley has taken money from Tidewater Builders, John Yearne, who's with Hotel Motel, and Wheel Town Bank Assessments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Howard. And after Ms. Howard is Teresa Langill.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Diana Howard, and we have a lot of concerns about this property. For one, this is one of the most congested areas of Virginia Beach, I know you all know that, right? And there's wetlands, as Virginia has already spoken about, so I won't go into that, but my other concern here is, is this part of the Town Center TIF? Is this the never-ending TIF that you just keep expanding? Was this the way the boundaries just got, you know, changed? And now they're going to get to keep all the taxes and everything that are raised over there so that they can pay for themselves and not pay for fire and police and safety and ambulances, teachers or anything? We get to pay for all that while they get to keep it and pay for parking garages or whatever else. This has got to stop. TIFs are not meant to do that. You build something with a TIF, you pay for it, it's done, stop expanding it, okay? We need an end to that. We need to not have our taxes raised every year so they get to keep those taxes that are supposed to go to stormwater but is now gonna go to their parking garage, right? For twenty years now, we've been subsidizing these developers. Back in nineteen eighty-nine, commercial properties paid almost twenty-one percent of the property taxes. This is from your financial report, okay? Now, at our financial report, they pay sixteen point seven percent. It's going down, yet we keep subsidizing them. So you keep raising our taxes, year after year, so you can pay for stormwater, right? But they get to keep theirs. What's up with that, right? And they want to get six hundred thousand dollars from economic development to what? Mitigate wetlands and do improved stormwater maintenance, but you're raising my taxes, and we're gonna not get ours done for what, fifteen years, some fancy projects, while you're not even doing the maintenance that needs to be done, right? Dig, dredge, the ditches, the canals, the lakes, and it's not rocket science. Enough's enough.
Thank you.
Teresa Langill.
Welcome.
You all know who I am, they just said my name, thank you for coming out and doing your job and being here. I knew, I kinda just was gonna come up and say that I disapprove, of course, of spending eleven point seven million dollars and giving it to a developer when you just raised our taxes. That, that's just sticking in my head, knowing that you just raised our taxes or planning on it. But then, after listening to a lot of what's been said, it reminded me of something that happened in the nineteen eighties, I believe, when I wasn't aware of the crony capitalism and stuff like that that's going on in Virginia Beach. The, I live in the lakes, and the park next to me was kind of just a park, there was a little bench in there and everything, and the city, the, the housing development, which we actually don't have one, but they kinda tried to, and they had a fund, and they didn't pay their taxes. So the city put it up for sale or auction, and for two thousand dollars, that park, and I believe all the parks in there were sold, and a few days after the auction, we got notice of the auction, and we live right next door to it, we would have tried to purchase it or whatever, but we didn't know about it. But we were really kind of uninformed about what goes on in Virginia Beach, we'd only been here a year or two. So what happened was, is the guy was gonna build this developer, I don't even know who he was, he was gonna build houses. Well, it turned out that you could not develop on this property, so the city turned around, sold it to, bought it back for twenty thousand dollars. So that was about eighteen thousand dollars profit for each one of those pieces of property. So when I heard that Virginia's saying that maybe they couldn't develop on it and everything, I thought, gee whiz, I really hope we don't sell it to them and then turn around and buy it back for something else. So I disapprove of this being spent, would hate to see another deal like that go down, and I think a park and planting some trees along there would be really nice, an improvement in that area, and just a pleasant dot ride down, down the Boulevard or down Bonnie Road. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that, how long was the deferral?
Two weeks.
Yeah, I move we defer this for two weeks.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for a deferral for two weeks.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have deferred this item until June the fourth, twenty nineteen.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, John.
Mrs. Wasserberg pointed, well, excuse me, got this cold still, that there will be an opportunity for them to speak again on June the fourth, just so they know that.
Oh, not a problem. Okay, next item, ordinance to declare excess property at Princess Sand Road and Winterberry Lane and authorize the city manager to sell to Tony D. LLC and Cynthia D. LLC. Applicant has withdrawn this request.
We do have one speaker, I'm sorry, that's, we have one, one speaker. The first speaker is Barbara Messner, and then the second speaker is Cheryl Scott.
Good evening. Just a reminder that I happened to be here in twenty seventeen, this has been going on since twenty seventeen. The residents in Landstown, they're extremely well-informed, but what shocked me in twenty seventeen, and Ms. Henley, you know, brought it to our attention, that if we gave a deferral to Tony D. Silvestro, Why Not Pizza, that when it came back the next time, the city would be the applicant. We wouldn't be going against the developer. I would also like to know, Mr. Hanson, you, you answered a lot of questions during the budget hearing, you seem to know more than most of these people who don't return any of my emails. How did Why Not Pizza win the exclusive bid to sell him net tickets while he's delivering pizza? That amazes me. But, yeah, I oppose the sale of excess property, 'cause you're taking the money off the tax rolls and you're giving it to developers, and I think that also includes, like, he has property, Breeden's property at Great Neck, and all of his trucks, that's the main, the main location that he started with. All these huge trucks that he works with, they're in the parking lot. He doesn't have a place where he stores his vehicles. So many of these businesses today, they get to park their rolling billboards right out on the street. So I oppose, I oppose this, and, you know, it is city property, so it requires a supermajority vote. Thank you.
Cheryl Scott. And then the next speaker after Ms. Scott is Warren Murphy.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Scott, I live on Landstown. I still would encourage city council to have that property sold as access. Yes, it didn't go to Tony D. I was disappointed to find out that his project wouldn't be going forward, then he was gonna be pulling his application. I still think that that property on that corner would be good for a good use of something, not exactly sure what, but no park, no dog park, no garden area. There's parks in Landstown, I think there's plenty of parks in the city, period. I don't think having a dog park is a part of the scenario, for the simple fact of it is, who's gonna take care of that? Garden, a community garden, who's gonna take care of the community garden? Everybody goes, yay, we wanna do that. We cannot even get enough people to come out and weed an area in front of our community sign, we have a median there with flowers in there. Yes, green at the weather's been bad lately, okay? But on the whole, we get mulch set there, it goes out on next door, no one comes out to help. It's the part, part of the board comes out, few people here and there. Parks aren't gonna work, dog parks aren't gonna work, community gardens will not work. So, in going forward, I think the property still needs to be sold to somebody, even if it's not Tony D. now, so be it. I think it would have been a great project, it's not gonna happen, so be it. But that's where I am with that project, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Warren Murphy.
Welcome, welcome.
My name's Warren Murphy, I'm also live in Landstown. I just wanted to address one question that was raised by one of the members of the council the last time that we had, we had met. There was discussion as far as the widths of Winterberry Lane and its effect on traffic through there, as far as a natural traffic calming or whatever, but a couple residents had gone around and took some measurements of the widths in several places, I think there were three or four that were, I know a gentleman who had been sitting over here had said something that they had to be thirty-two feet wide or thirty-something feet wide, and in many places they were twenty-six to twenty-seven feet width, which makes two-lane traffic, rather, two-way traffic with cars parked on both sides veritably impossible, you know, to get passed. And with the parcel having to ingress and egress off of Winterberry Lane, it's just, you know, there's no other legal way to do it, and that, again, I just want to reiterate that, you know, how, how much that will affect local traffic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay.
Is there someone else who wanted to, I thought, okay, may this lady speak, if she gives you her name and so forth, she didn't realize that it wasn't gonna be at the end. Okay.
Good evening, City Council, my name is Jennifer Carrick, and as a member of the Landstown community, I'd like to thank all of you for the time and consideration you've put into looking at the best course of action for the property on Princess Sand Road and Winterberry Lane. I imagine it can be very tricky to try and balance I imagine it can be very tricky to try and balance growing businesses, especially one of Virginia Beach's own, and the needs of the community that they're in. With Winterberry Lane being a standard residential road and not even a collector's street into the community, traffic impacted in the neighborhood would be detrimental to our quality of life. While researching this matter, I discovered there are many more suitable lots, as well as vacant buildings and office spaces throughout Virginia Beach. And I truly hope that Tony D. LLC is able to find something locally that meets their needs and gets full support of the neighborhoods that are adjacent to it. This particular lot just doesn't fit those requirements. So again, thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Ms. Henley, for all of your help on this and your efforts. And I hope the Lanstown community might work with the city in further developing this green space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carrick, if you would come over, please.
Okay. Okay, this one, Ms. Henley.
Can you fill that out for me? Okay, so we're only dealing with this two. We'll deal with the zoning application later, or do we do them both at the same time?
You get them both?
Situation.
Other speakers on the other item?
We have the speakers on the zoning application.
Okay, all right. Then just dealing with item H2, allowing this withdrawal, I move that we allow the withdrawal.
Second.
By a vote of 11 to 0, this item has been withdrawn.
Okay, and I guess we're on to?
Item five.
Number five, ordinance to appropriate $35,000 to CIP number 3-154, Fire Training Center Improvements IV, which realized interest from aid to locality grants, R.A. purchase and installations of a new sign in the Virginia Beach Fire Training Center. Speakers.
Barbara Messner.
I missed a few meetings. And I printed out the agenda, 369 pages. They printed it double-sided, but it would be two inches. How many people, I doubt if any of y'all really read the entire agenda.
Oh, yes.
Because you don't answer the emails. But $35,000 from the CIP for a sign. I just, I don't understand how it could cost $35,000 for a sign. I don't think you're fiscally responsible. And speaking of fiscally responsible, when I spoke on the budget one time, I said, you know, we have a $2 billion debt, and I said 1 million budget. It was 1 million decades ago. It's 2 billion debt, $2 billion budget and $2 billion debt. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers on that item.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
Move approval.
Do we have a motion for approval? We'll have a second?
Second.
Good. Vote is open. Okay, we got a.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the item 6A.
No, that was five.
No, that was five.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, five. I apologize.
Okay. We're moving on to 6A, which is $119,573 from fiscal year 2018 to 19, police operating budget to CIP number 3-344, police fourth precinct replacements, Ray technology, equipment, and installation costs. Speakers.
Barbara Messner.
Good evening. That's quite a scowl on your face, Mr. Moss. I've known you a long time.
The glare.
Glare, okay. I remember when you wore sunglasses one time. Beady little sunglasses. Anyway, the only reason I'm bringing this up, and you have mentioned it also, Councilman Moss, is the $116,573 is from the 2018-2019 budget, and you've talked about reading the prior budgets. So that's the only reason I'm bringing it up. Did you want to mention that or discuss it?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move approval.
I have a move approval. I have a second. Vote's open. John.
Just for point of clarification, I have opposed in the past using the ending fund balance before we actually have it or reserve for contingencies for the current year. This lates the process. But this is actually using the operating budget of the department for an expense that's not budgeted in next year's budget, that is a one-time capital expense. And I applaud the city manager for not going to the normal habit of going to reserve for contingencies, but in fact asking the actual department to provide the offset for their need, and that's the reason why I'm voting yes.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the ordinance 6A.
Okay, we're moving on to planning items. Number two, Tony D. LLC and City of Virginia Beach for a conditional zoning for Ag 2 Agriculture to conditional O2 office in the northwest corner of Princess Anne and Winterberry Lane's District 7, Princess Anne.
First speaker is Barbara Messner.
Yeah, this issue brings up a lot of other issues, including traffic. A lot of times, the city uses traffic, their own traffic counts instead of traffic studies. We have major problems with traffic gridlock. And suddenly, you're going to have, there's going to have the Tango Strawberry Festival. I haven't been for years. I would love to go, but I can't deal with the traffic and the crowds. We have major crime. How many of y'all look at the news? The real traffic stats are, our neighborhood scout, the FBI, does not give Virginia Beach that greater rating. I think we need to slow down uncontrolled growth, and I don't think we need to be rezoning for private developers. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cheryl Scott. And after Ms. Scott is Linda Russell.
Welcome back.
Glad to be back. So going forward on this project, I'm disappointed in seeing that it didn't go forward. I was disappointed to find out that the people opposed to the project knew about the withdrawal long before me, myself, and I. I spoke at the city council the very first time. And I'm known amongst the area, especially through Ms. Henley. I attend her meetings. I was disappointed to find out the project didn't happen. I too hope that someday he will find a place where he can build his building, and it will be encouraging to the young people in, in his Why Not industry. That building would have been perfect for them. That's all I can, can tell you at this time. But I am interested in the fact that I did just get done sitting at your city council meeting not too long ago, and when we come to economic development, I feel like this development would have been a boost for the economy in our area. I really do. It's disappointing, but hopefully somewhere along the line, I hope he comes back again in a different area, maybe, possibly. There's a possibility he still could wind up in our, in our neighborhood, I think. Well, not inside the neighborhood, because he's not inside the neighborhood. But there is property close by, so hopefully he'll be able to do that, and it will be convenient to his people that are working at his restaurant. He's a good neighbor. He does care about the community, and I don't think I have to tell you that. His, his personal record speaks for itself. I appreciate your time and listening to me on this subject, okay? Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Linda Russell.
I'm Linda Russell, and I hope y'all remember what I said the last time. Somebody said I wasn't a very good speaker. I should hire somebody to speak for me. And I'm not very good at carrying signs, because Mark actually arrested me three times at the something in the water thing down at Creed's, okay? So I'm not good at any of that. But anyway, kind of echo Cheryl, you're still sitting in there all the time. I think this would have been a great place for this business. And if you remember, I think Mr. Jones spoke about that people last time were, what a good neighbor he was, and he was letting them walk through there and everything. There wasn't no traffic with, with traffic. And that actually, I guess, would come up as being trespassing. I'm not sure. Even though it is, somebody owns it, even though it's the city, so. And they talked about a park. A park is like right down the street, just a block away, is a park the taxpayers paid for. So I think you can't have it both ways. You can't have these people here. I mean, they, they worked their butt off for you guys, okay? We got Chesapeake coming up, and you're going to listen to them. They come out to their neighborhoods. And it's very discouraging to see them work, 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 and it goes through planning, and it comes here, and not one of y'all, not one of y'all listens to them, okay? I mean, I just don't understand it. And I think you can't have, like Cheryl and I, we sit there and we don't understand. You want open space, but if open space is costing you money, I imagine somebody's going to go out there and cut the grass. I know in my neighborhood, somebody comes out and cuts just the, you know, it's contracted out. I mean, that's a lot of gas and money and all. So if open space is costing you money, you know, you know what I'm saying? You can't have it both ways. You can't have them trying to develop something, and then you come back and say this. And I don't know. I just don't know the answer. I think that would be a great place for the guy to have, to have his, have his business, so.
Thank you very much.
Jennifer Carrick, I think you don't want to speak, so hey, thank you. That's all the speakers.
Okay, Mrs. Henley.
Yes, before I make the motion, I will just say that Mr. Tony D. at his own volition sent a letter to the city asking that it be withdrawn. I, I think that this shows that he is a good neighbor and he cares about the community. This just came to the city from him at his, as I said, his own volition. I think he reconsidered, and this is what he requested. But I do understand that, you know, he's certainly going to be looking for an appropriate place. And I think that, I, I hope he will find a good place, because I think he will be a good corporate addition to the city. So I will move that we do allow withdrawal.
Second.
Okay, vote's open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, this item has been withdrawn.
Okay, moving on, planning item number three, 7-Eleven Incorporated ZP number 31 LLC for conditional zoning from B1 neighborhood business to conditional B2 community business and for a conditional use permit, Ray Automobile Service Station at 5300 Princess Anne Road, District 2 Kempsville.
We have two speakers. We have the applicant, and then we have Ms. Messner signed up. Do, you may have the applicant come up first?
Yes.
Rob Beeman.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, for the record. My name is Rob Beeman. I'm a local land use attorney with the law firm, Tropman Sanders, here today on behalf of the applicant, 7-Eleven Inc. Joining me this evening is Mr. Gary Franks, who is our civil engineer. This application involves a proposed 7-Eleven store on property that's been zoned commercially for a long time. It was originally a gasoline station many years ago and was redeveloped in the late 1990s as a Rite Aid store. Rite Aid has now left the property, and this site is currently vacant. The application before you this evening is a result of a very collaborative process. The applicant has worked closely with the staff over the past several months to craft a series of proper development conditions that are designed to ensure the quality and attractiveness of this site, and also to mitigate any potential impacts on nearby residential properties. The applicant has also reached out to members of the community in connection with this application, and has met with members of the originally Civic League, the full body of the Carolin Farm Civic League, and also Mr. and Ms. Denny, who are the owners of the property located immediately to the rear of the site. The applicant has also contacted other nearby property owners by mail and telephone to notify them of this application. With respect to the proposed site layout, because of the depth of the property, 7-Eleven is, is able to provide a very wide buffer area to the rear of the site. There is a 60-foot buffer, approximately 60-foot buffer proposed along the rear property line, and the building itself would sit approximately 120 feet from the rear property line. Further, there is a 30-foot wide parcel, which actually isn't shown on this plan, but there is an old farm road that was privately owned and still is privately owned behind this site, which provides further buffering from the nearest occupied residential parcel. In addition to those buffers, 7-Eleven has also proffered several development conditions that are designed to further mitigate any potential impacts on nearby residential properties, which include a six-foot-high privacy fence to the rear of the site, a double layer or double row of evergreen trees, and has also agreed to restrict the height of the light poles to 14 feet, and to restrict dumpster loading and unloading between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM the following morning. For those reasons, we believe the proposed 7-Eleven would be compatible with the surrounding land uses, and we respectfully request approval.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for the applicant. I just want to confirm, I apologize, you and I couldn't connect.
Yes, ma'am.
Before today, but in talking with David Weiner, the Kempsville Planning Commission representative, my understanding is that you all will be leaving the original landscape buffer and then adding that additional, and that is where you're getting that double row?
Well, yes, ma'am. The double row is new, but there are existing trees along the rear property line, and any trees that are healthy and mature along the rear of the property, we intend to save.
Very good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Henley.
May I just also ask you, just because this has presented problems and other issues, which we are really looking at tonight, and you mentioned the 14-feet height of the, any lighting?
Yes, ma'am.
Would be not higher than 14 feet. And it can remain on provided at any time, at any time, provided that the source of the light is shielded to not be visible from the property lines of adjacent properties, and that the light be contained on the subject property. You're confident that you can retain all of this light on your property, and it's not going to be visible to off-site properties? That's what it says.
Yes, ma'am. And I think what that's referring to, zoning folks will correct me if I'm wrong, is any light spillage onto adjacent lots. And the beauty of this site, too, is there won't be no lights in the rear of the site in that 60-foot buffer. The lights will be in the parking area, which is well away from that residential, and I think that's, if you correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's why we're confident there won't be any light spillage. And certainly, we do understand that the source of the light will be shielded, and that the source of the light, the light bulb itself, won't be visible from the adjacent property.
And you're going to shield all the lights?
Yes, ma'am. Downward and inwardly directed as well.
Downward and inward, and they will not be visible from any of the residential adjoining properties?
Yes, ma'am. The source of the light, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
The source of the light, you see, clarify that.
Yeah, and I believe that is referring to the light bulb itself. In other words, they may be able to see a light pole in the distance, you know, shining the other way, because the light poles will be 14 feet high. But the source of the light itself, that will be shielded from the adjacent property.
And I guess these will be LED lights. They seem to be the thing anymore.
Yes, ma'am.
And they are brighter. So you're, you're very much aware of this, and you're going to be sure that you're going to not have this problem with the neighbors.
Yes, ma'am. We understand from our engineer that we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner.
I'm used to seeing the 7-Eleven on the agenda, but this says automobile service station. The 7-Elevens, they have 24-hour convenience stores, and they probably have more crime than almost any other business that I know of. And we subsidize, you know, the Economic Development Authority has been subsidizing 7-Elevens, which surprised me. Also, it's unfair competition to everyone else. Subsidized GTS Global, Spark Q, Steel, Aldi's, Lidl's, on and on. We need to look at environmental impact studies. I asked if there were environmental impact studies. I really appreciate, Ms. Henley, I'm not picking on you, I'm just bringing up conflicts because of supermajority votes. You and Ms. Wooton came out to look at the property where they want to put a brewery. And I was told by planning that they don't do environmental impact studies. The brewery is a manufacturing and distribution center, plus it's going to be open all these hours. It's going to be more flooding. We already have flooding, and...
Ms. Bedser, are you talking about this particular 7-Eleven?
I'm talking about environmental impact studies and taxpayer subsidies to the 7-Eleven. And I, like I said, I'm asking, I assume Mr. Hanson would know, is this the first service station that they've asked to build? Because it's usually 24, they have like 10 pumps and, and then the convenience stores. And they have deliveries, huge delivery trucks. So is this the first automobile service station applicant, application that they've done? Or do you know?
I don't understand your question.
It says here, changing from community business to conditional for automobile service station. station. I didn't know Seven-Elevens had automotive service stations.
Ms. Messner, I think service station gives you the thing that they're actually servicing automobiles.
Right.
And this is only gas pumps.
Right.
And that's a universal term.
Right.
I can understand it could be confusing to the public, but it's just the standard Seven-Eleven building with a gas pump.
Seven-Elevens, correct?
No.
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 Not to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, well, I'll bring that, I'll look it up and send it to you, because they have been on the agenda before.
Thank you very much. Okay, we do have speakers for Piney Grove?
Oh.
Oh, my apologies.
That's the last speaker for that item.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Jess?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this. I'd also just like to give some credit where credit's due. David Weiner worked very closely with this applicant and with the neighborhoods in coordinating this effort. There was a desire down the road for there to be a gas pump, and this seems like a really great site. And the fact that the applicant wants to be such a good neighbor to ensure that the residents in the immediate area are not impacted, I really think this is going to be a win. This property has sat vacant for a very long time, and I'm happy to move for its approval.
Thank you very much. We have a second. The vote is open on Seven-Eleven.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the application of Seven-Eleven.
All right, moving on, now we do have speakers on Piney Grove?
Oh, yeah.
No?
So we do have speakers on Piney Grove, although it was considered on the consent agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, let them speak with our question.
Eddie, the first speaker is Eddie Abrams. And then after Mr. Abrams, the next speaker is Cheryl Scott.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I spoke with you all before, back in January. I am Eddie Abrams, Vice President of Pace Collaborative. We're mechanical electrical engineers located here in Virginia Beach, and we've been helping resolve the lighting issue with the Piney Grove Baptist Church. Last week, we were able to get the new lighting fixtures installed, as we noted we would back in January. The fixtures have been programmed, there are shields on the fixtures. We've tested the lighting at the property line, and it's zero light levels beyond the property line and even all the way up to the edge of the parking lot. We have motion sensors on the fixtures. The fixtures are set up right now that they will come on at dusk, they go off at, officially off at dawn. At eight o'clock, they will dim to seventy-five percent, and they will stay at seventy-five percent until ten PM, when that is the close of business for the church. That is their published operating hours. After ten PM, so the parking lot would be dark, if there is motion detected, the light fixtures, individual light fixtures will come on, not all of them. So if someone were to drive into the parking lot, as they approach each light fixture, that light fixture would come on, and they are set to stay on for ten to twenty minutes. Maybe the ones closer to the road a little bit longer for security purposes. So we feel like we have met the requirements of the conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you very much. Miss Henley?
I just want to say thank you to your company. I know that you all have really worked hard on this, and my concern was, you know, more than just these two days to make sure everything is going to be working right, and we'll revisit this June fourth. But I did just hear some concerns that maybe something wasn't going off at the right time, because I know you all have worked hard on it and you want it to be right. That's my only reason for deferring, so I really appreciate your company doing the work. As you can see, even though we're not requiring these other, we've got three others on this agenda with a very similar requirement.
Right.
It just ought to have motion sensors, but to not allow any of the light to go on to the residential properties in the neighborhood. So even though they don't have motion sensors, there's this very strict requirement, and I just want to make sure it works.
Yes, ma'am, and I think I have been helping the city, with Kevin in particular, to write some ordinance language for you all, so I think we're getting there anyway.
That's my understanding, and I appreciate that, and I think we're on the right track, and I just, I want to be sure before we keep requiring all these other people to meet the standard.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harry Leschley. And then the next speaker is Cheryl Scott.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. I understand, Ms. Henley, if you want to continue to June for us, for Ed to decide the consequences about the lighting, basically, we have met the requirement or the condition to have sensors installed. It means, so that means we have met the requirement, so I don't see the reason why we could continue to discuss this matter. We have met the requirement that you could see required to do, that's install sensors, not by control or demo, which has gone far and beyond what you have required to do. So continue to have it, to come back again in June, that process, I don't understand the reason why on that process of it. I mean, as a church, I think we have done way far beyond what we can do in trying to please the community and the positive meet what we get done. I mean, it's basically, it's getting tiresome, it's possible that maybe we could constantly take an hour's time to do what we got to do to do that process of it. So we have met what we required to do tonight, so I don't understand why we can't be approved and move forward.
Well, this application, this particular condition says, "All lighting on the site shall be directed downward and not spill over onto adjoining residential lots."
Well, and...
And then, of course, it says that there would be, you were asking that the park, all parking lot lighting shall be on motion sensors at night when the church is not in use. You have met that section, but there are still other sentences in this condition.
Ma'am, based on what Ed explained to you, based on the test that we done with Kevin with there as well, we did, we installed the light, all the light, basically, in the process of it, it's shining down on the parking lot. I mean, from the day until June the fourth, nothing is going to change in the process of it.
Then we'll be able to say it's all done. I'm hoping that that's what's going to happen. Thank you very much.
I mean, that's the point of it, I don't understand the reason why, I mean, we put a request as a church and we got denied for that process of, because we thought that we weren't going to have enough time to get the light in there, and so it was denied in that process of it. So by, and so now that we are here tonight to do what we got to do, and now we're still saying that, now we get here, we found out that it's going to be continued.
Well, it's just deferred until June second to make sure, since it's only been on a few days, but it was not denied. The Planning Commission only made that recommendation, only the council, and we have not denied it.
I understand that, but what I'm trying to say, ma'am, is that we have done what we was required to do.
Good.
I mean, so to move from, had to approve, to move forward from the night to June the second, I don't see no reason, that process, we have come, we have done what we required to do for the city.
Good, thank you, and I'm sure if that's true, then everything will be fine.
Thank you very much, sir.
And just for clarification, it's June the fourth that this item was deferred to, June the fourth. That's Cheryl Scott and then Linda Russell.
On the lighting for the church, one of the things that teters people from breaking into buildings and laudering on parking lots is good lighting. I get that the residents don't want the lighting coming into their bedrooms, their buildings or whatever. It's going to take time for that shrubbery to grow. It doesn't happen overnight. Patience, I think, is the ultimate virtue here, okay? On top of which, I think the only other alternative, if this lighting still does not work out for these neighbors, is to build a twelve-foot wall behind the church. And then I'm thinking, that's not even going to be something that they're going to want to like. I'm not knocking the neighborhood or anything like that, I'm just saying it takes time for shrubberies, plantings and everything to do. I have gone over to that church, those people are the nicest people in the whole daggone world, and I believe they have done everything they possibly can to appease everybody, but see, they can't appease everybody. I also don't believe that all projects that are having lighting on their places, I get there's ordinance rules and regulations, there's going to be times when that lighting is absolutely going to be necessary for their businesses. Breaking into businesses, all the crime rate of the current world is just nuts. I think lighting is very important in the area, especially in Virginia Beach. I fly with airplanes over top my head. Yeah, there's times when at ten o'clock on Sunday night, I want to go to sleep and they start firing up, driving up, and do I say, oh crap, there they go again? Yeah, but I know what it's like for those airplanes not to be there, and it's a very unsafe type of environment for me when they're not there. And it's the same way with lighting. If I live behind the church, I think I would want some of that lighting in my backyard so I would know who is crawling and walking back there, may it be critters or whatever. Since those dimmers and all that thing, I think is a very good ideal. I also think the motion thing is going to be a fantastic ideal, because if someone's driving through there on off-hours, they may be heading to people's neighborhood, that neighborhood behind them, and they could be up to no good. That's all I have to say on that, okay?
Thank you.
I think the church is a very good neighbor, big time, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Russell.
Linda Russell, yeah, maybe I'll learn to get this thing down pat. First of all, I would like to thank the two of you for getting back to my emails, and Mr. Hanson, and thank you, Amanda. I lived in Cardinal State for fifty-five years. Now, you want to talk about lights? Soccer field lights are in my neighborhood, okay? Not one of y'all, not one of y'all have ever been into my neighborhood. I've lived in there fifty-five years, okay? And thank, you're going to be my, Rose Hall, are you? Thank you. I haven't had a decent council person since Reuben McClanahan left me, okay? She came out to my neighborhood constantly, and you two have gotten back to my, and you know what, you're not even near me, okay? And thank you for that. This neighborhood, in fact, I put most of y'all, not put y'all, but I've stood out in the rain, snow and everything, put all, most all of y'all in here, even you, John Moss. And I don't know, you haven't gotten back to me since Phil the Steph left, I don't know why. None of y'all got back to me. I don't know why, but these people get back to me. These people have made my neighborhood a success story. My neighborhood is traffic, you're talking about traffic? Yes. My main streets with the sidewalks were, streets have opened into my neighborhood, neighborhoods, and I welcome them, except for the soccer field, of course. And that's never, like Cheryl said, that is never going to take place. My neighbors have windows, have dark screens, everything, you know? Bottom line is, you know, it's just not going to change. Mark Johnson came out, he changed my stop signs to yield signs. Mike Shoddy and everybody, this whole, every department in the city has helped me, okay? Now, you act like all of a sudden this is, this development is like, they're going to require you to raise your, everything we do now. I've heard y'all sit there and talk about it. Even if you put a add-on, you're going to raise it, and they want you to raise the other part, too, right? Well, if you'll come out and look at the waterfront apartments, the waterfront apartments is a three-story building with a basement. I wish I could see tires, okay? I can't even see the cars. And when it rains, the water comes down my neighborhood, and these people that are complaining here, you've got two people here, and after all you did for them, and is the taxpayers, are the taxpayers happy with...
Thank you very much.
With you paying, you know? But like I said...
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers.
Okay, I believe this Piney Grove, you know, is on deferral, so if it's okay, we will move on. Planning item five, Wasserhund Brewing Company.
So we only have one speaker signed up, which is Barbara Messner. I do not have anyone but the applicant.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I can't help but smile at some of the praise for certain people. It's just fascinating. Anyway, Wasserhund, that's one of the first breweries that y'all approved. They're all taxpayer subsidized with the Economic Development Authority. The small ones start out with ten thousand subsidy, then the second time, twenty. I think Wasserhund, this is probably the fourth, so, but the money goes to manufacturing and distribution. Some of these places distribute to Target, local stores as far away as New Mexico. So they were approved as a brewery, it's a new, should I wait until he comes back or does it matter?
Keep, you only got three minutes, Ms. Messner.
All right. Okay, the venues, the brewery is a brand-new industry. They do not serve food, any non-alcoholic beverages, and I've spoken out against breweries since you started. I think the first one is twenty-fourteen or twenty-fifteen. This ties in with the Red Wing area, and like I said, I'm going to do the same thing. Ms. Henley and Ms. Wooton, you all haven't been back, and I just spoke to Public Works Director, he said he would come out there. It's taken since last October for y'all to put up a sign. We have a police-themed brewery, we're subsidizing a police-themed brewery, and there's no environmental impact studies done on these, and the traffic, it's like a hundred and twenty-three thousand cars per day, and y'all, on top of it, you want to put in a gas station on Prosperity and General Booth. So I just would appreciate it if y'all would find time to answer the emails and not subsidize breweries. That's not the best use of our money. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers.
Okay, Mr. Tower?
I move approval.
Okay, do we have a second? Any other discussion? Okay, vote is open.
They do serve food.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved Wasserhund Brewing Company.
Okay, moving on to planning item six, Phil Kellum, BPK Properties LLC, conditional use permit, RA use at twenty-three eighty-four Princess Anne Road, and that was deferred from May seventh, Princess Anne.
You have one speaker, Linda Russell.
Linda Russell, okay, this is exactly what you guys preach about. Come here to live, stay here, and bring the kids back. So this is what you're doing. This is exactly what you want. And we've got our fifth generation with the baby coming, okay? So thank you for approving this.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, Miss Henley?
Yeah, I will just say that Mr. Kellum has been working with this piece of property for a number of years to try to work something out, recognizing that there really needed to be another source of income. When you have a wonderful old structure like this, it's pretty costly to maintain, and he's been working with the neighbors, and some of his ideas didn't meet with their approval, but he's kept working, and I haven't heard anyone express any opposition, so I think he's probably got the right idea, and I really appreciate him and his family working on this with the extent that they have and wish them well, and I will move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Votes open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the application of Phil Kellum.
Okay, and the final planning item for the evening, number seven, K&amp;T Incorporated, DBA Ballyhoops Marina Shores Repair Corp., for conditional use permit, RA outdoor recreation and assembly use facility at twenty-eight sixty-five Lynn Haven Drive.
First speaker is Craig Davis. And after Mr. Davis, it's Christopher Fountain.
Welcome.
Council members, I'm Craig Davis, owner of K&amp;T Incorporated. Me and my partner, Jay Jamison, funded a restaurant and then the shopping center down there in Marina Shores that we thought was an ideal location to not only have a nice location for different events, but also behind it was a piece of property that had kind of just fallen by the wayside. It runs along the river, right on Broad Bay, and it's basically fifteen thousand square feet. It had trailers on it, we have a lot of hotels near us, so they were using it for trailers. It's a little overgrown, so we thought it was a great opportunity to take our restaurant and kind of expand our patio, open our industry now, and especially in Virginia Beach, especially in Virginia Beach, outdoor events and activity is very big. So without asking for a dollar from the city, we went in and cleaned it up. made it nice, landscaped it, picnic tables, cornhole games. Children, adults, everybody makes use out of it. We've been open for about ten months. And we've generated about a quarter of a million dollars in tax revenues for the city and state. And, and it's, it's been very successful and very well-received. In the parking study, you'll see that we have an excess of parking. We also went, and our neighbors, who are very supportive of us, have offered us additional parking if for any use we would need it. But with Marina Shores closing down and the hotel conference center not operating, there really isn't a lot of options for events. So we get, you know, get asked for, for family reunions, high school reunions, birthday parties, receptions, and we'd like to do afternoon weddings as well. So that's really the use of it. The restaurant is, is self-sustaining. The park is, was very simple to clean up and make it a nice event. And we literally have everybody from toddlers to our seniors who enjoy it on a daily basis. If any of you've been down, you, you've witnessed that. I think if there's any opposition, it might be lighting, which all of our lighting directs right to the berm of the Great Neck Bridge. So there would be no issues with, with lighting back there. And sound, as you see, we've, we've taken extra steps to make sure that we are, we are within all our sound rules, laws. And we've even actually moved our outside sound to ten o'clock. So any sound past ten o'clock would only be inside our existing restaurant. And, and as I have stated to our community, we've met with community leaders. We met with Bayfront, and we've got the support of Bayfront Advisory. But as I said to anybody, if sound is an issue, if there's sound inside anybody's house, no matter what the reading is on a, on a sound gauge or whatever, that they would let me know directly, and I would make sure that would not happen. There, we are not going to be a problem in that community. We are gonna be a big supporter of that community, and that's our purpose of building it. We've, we've already helped thirty-five charities in the last ten months hold events there. And we, we hope to continue to get to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Christopher Fountain. And after Mr. Fountain is Jay Jamison.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Chris Fountain, I live on Adam Keelam Road. I'm in favor for two reasons. There was a picture, but from a noise perspective, myself and my adjacent neighbors, we, even when it was a little after ten o'clock, it never really was loud. And I just wanted to come in and let everybody know, just as a neighbor, they are a good neighbor as far as sound is concerned. Second thing I wanna talk about is the family atmosphere. There are a lot of places on Shore Drive now, very few of them are child-friendly. And I can attest, excuse me, I can attest that, you know, in the early evenings, the kids can run around, the parents can still enjoy themselves. And I think that they are worthy of approval.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Jay Jamison. And after Mr. Jamison is Dwight Handforth.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Jay Jamison. I am the other owner of Ballyhoos. I think my colleague did a great job conveying our concerns to the committee. I wanna add a forum we had. We had about thirty residents from the area attend a community forum about a month prior to the planning hearing. In, in that hearing, it was, it was kind of, it was interesting. We thought there was a misperception between what the conditional permit allowed us to do, what we're trying to achieve. So we learned that they thought it gave us kind of a blank canvas to do what we really wanna do. We explained, listen, what that does allows us to continue doing what we're currently doing. Nothing more, nothing less. This permit allows us to continue playing bocce ball, playing cornhole, throwing the phys. Nothing more, nothing less. So I think once we explained that to them, there was a relief. So I'm happy to see that, that since then, we've had less concerns and, and more of a cohesive atmosphere with the neighbors in, in the building. So thank you for your time.
Thanks for bocce, appreciate it.
Dwight Handforth. And after Mr. Handforth is Shermis Saif.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, the council, for allowing me to come on in. My main concern with the conditional use of Ballyhoos is two issues to deal with traffic. The one is parking, and the packet it says there's two-hundred-and-fifty spots. And you have to have two-hundred-and-nine, two-hundred-and-five, rather, two-hundred-and-forty spot, forty-five spots, two-hundred-and-nine, five are needed for the type of use it is. I think that was before Ballyhoos came in. It certainly was before they were asking for special permits of two-hundred-and-fifty and up people coming. But I would also say that there are several parking spots, even tonight, that have food trucks or other things that are taking up over twenty spots as we speak. So you're already down below that minimum required if you take a look at all the parking. The other factor is that South Lynn Haven Road, between that area, the neighborhood across, which I live in, and which is in the harbors, the first place people are gonna go if they can't park over there are over in ours. And yes, we can have them towed away if we know that they're the ones that are in there. But the problem is, is then we have to be the police, and we just don't think we need to have that situation. The other traffic issue that's gonna be coming there, a number of apartment, or, or, a large housing complex is being built right across the street from it. That's Great Neck Road there. I'm not sure how many units or how many people might go fill in there. But that's another, I'm gonna pick a number, two-hundred cars that are trying to go in that area if they're traveling various places. And if you have, particularly if you go to those really large events, I'm not sure how it plays out. But I know it's gonna be awfully traffic, awful traffic, and an awful lot of burden on the police or whatever it is to whoever they get out to help with the direct of traffic. So for the parking issue and some of the other traffic issues that are coming up, I would recommend at least a deferral or rejection of this proposal.
Thank you very much.
Shermis Saif, sorry. Then the next speaker is Curtis Hutchinson.
Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Shermis Saif. I'm one of the homeowners that's directly across from Ballyhoos. I would like to take a moment to express my opinion in favor of the establishment. The state of shopping center before Ballyhoos moved in was not good. There was multiple open spaces and an empty parking lot that was attracting less than desirable individuals that were using the parking lot as a hangout spot. Ballyhoos moved into a space that was occupied by an age and outdated Irish pub that was, was not frequently trafficked. They updated the restaurant and has become an outstanding bar and grill for entire families to enjoy. It has been a safe outdoor space for kids and, and that many families use to bring their children out for a night out. It is the only family-oriented restaurant that I know of on Shore Drive that it can truly bring every-age children to your, to the restaurant and enjoy evening out. Soon after, other businesses started to move into the shopping center, and now it's a fully-occupied shopping center. The level, the level of noise is not a concern to me. And there are other stoppages nearby that have much more impact on noise and traffic. Most, every individual goes to the Ballyhoos use Uber because it's convenient and short drive to, for many reasons of alcohol consumption, obviously, as you can imagine. Lastly, as, we as a community should be proud that one of our neighbors is willing to invest in our own community. We see the owners at, and their families at local restaurants, gym, coffee shops, gas stations. To me, it's a great thing to know that current owners are active members of community. Alternatively, it could have been a corporate chain restaurant or back to that empty, dying shopping center that we are facing at that time. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Curtis Hutchinson. And then Gail Higgs.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me. My name is Curtis Hutchinson, and I've been an owner of Paradigm Dynamics Incorporated, trading as Amici Style, for twenty years at Marina Shore Shops. The south end of the shopping center was basically overgrown. There wasn't much going on there, little soliciting going on. The shopping center has improved aesthetically. We get more people, more traffic, more customers. All ages of family show up there. It's fantastic, it's wonderful. We do some charitable events, we do it with the restaurant as well, that we raise money for the city. The owner keeps up cleanliness. If there are any concerns about anything, he is always willing to work with all the other tenants. And my clients, there is no problems with parking whatsoever. Nobody's ever, you know, complained at all. My business has received thirty-five new clients since Ballyhoos opening. My average ticket is ninety dollars, that's thirty-five, thirty-five guests at three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The average guest will visit our salon for services six times in a year. That's five-hundred-and-four dollars times six visits, which is eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred dollars increase of revenue that I tracked from their clients coming over to our salon. I just wanted to share the positive stuff with that. And that's not including our retail tickets. They do a fantastic job, and they've cleaned up that area. They're bringing in a lot of nice stuff. Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Gail Higgs. And after Ms. Higgs is Scott Hawkins.
Welcome.
Nice to be here tonight. I'm here in support of the application. I can tell you unequivocally, we gotta pronounce it right. We have not had any parking issues whatsoever. We always have empty spaces, and I study it more than anybody does to make sure that the combination is accurate. And they could not have done a better job in attracting entire families. Every time, I work out at the gyms next door, and every single evening, there's children running everywhere in that park. And it's wonderful, so I'm in support.
Thanks so much.
Scott Hawkins. And after Mr. Hawkins is Nona Sorenson.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Scott Hawkins. My wife and I, Lisa Row, live directly across the water from Ballyhoos. And we have no issues with it. We would like to see it stay. We like the venue, we like listening to the music. Sometimes we can hear it from our backyard, but it's never too loud. And most of the time, it's only if the wind's right. We enjoy going over there and hanging out. And my neighbors on the other side of the bridge also like listening to the music and have no issues at all whatsoever with any of the venue. My wife's grown up there since she was a kid, and seen many, many changes from when it used to be dunes to the marina, and now our new neighbors that'll be moving in shortly. So we're glad to have this as a little getaway from it. So we are in favor of it.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Nona Sorenson.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Doing good, thank you.
Good. My family has resided at the arbors at Cape Henry since the homes were first built in the nineteen-nineties. My husband and I joined the neighborhood, and we have grave concerns regarding the health and the safety of the arbors residents should the conditional use permit sought by Ballyhoos be granted. Well, make that an exception, should this permit be granted. We also have concerns regarding decreased home values likely resulting in decreased property taxes for the city and increased costs for the city's services to address the needs and congestion that the larger influx of people will bring to this community. In particular, the entire side of my unit faces Ballyhoos music, which on a number of occasions last fall penetrated my walls, was louder than my television. Based on city ordinance, we gritted our teeth at night with the vibrations and the loss of peace and quiet. We only recently learned that Ballyhoos was using the area illegally at that time without a permit, since Ballyhoos prior illegal use was out, without proper authority. It seems logical that if the permit were to be granted, Ballyhoos would continue to disregard the rights of the residents in this community, but to a much larger degree. Through communications with my neighbors, I've learned that neighbors from all sides of the arbors have heard the music, and they too agree that the noise is an annoyance and would interfere with the quiet use and enjoyment of their properties. Residents of the arbors are already experiencing difficulties simply trying to walk across Lynn Haven Drive to access the local hardware store. And the family, families with young children from the arbors like to frequent the local yogurt parlor across the street. A prior request for a traffic light at the intersection of Great Neck Road and Lynn Haven Drive was previously denied. I believe a traffic light is also needed at the intersection of West Great Neck Road and Lynn Haven Drive as it's a popular cut-through for traffic from Great Neck Road to Shore Drive. And if the permit is granted, this intersection will even be more dangerous and hazardous for pedestrian, bicyclists, and motorist traffic. Additionally, Ballyhoos serves alcohol, so there would be an increased safety and traffic hazards based on this as well. I understand that on Shore Drive, the speed limit used to be forty-five miles per hour and went down to thirty-five due to the death of a twenty-three-year-old. I would hate to see that happen on Great Neck Road.
Thank you very much.
I'm not done yet. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the red light's on.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. May I just help you a couple more minutes?
Your time is up, ma'am, we gotta be fair to everybody.
All right, very good, thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I had the opportunity to walk through the property and also met with the, the applicant. And, and went over a lot of this in the applicant app, and also talked to the planning director, just to make sure that I was clear on, on everything that we've got here. One of the speakers talked about the parking spaces. If you look at the, the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet down, it does talk about the additional parking spaces. And, and the planning staff does in fact say that there, that there were parking spaces that were encumbered by, by some of the improvements, but that there were sufficient parking spaces. After having read that, I still called the planning director to make sure, are there enough parking spaces? And he told me that there were. And I, I say, I'm on that road a couple times a week. And, and having, having looked at it, I can see that it's rare that, that parking lot's frankly more than half-full, at least when I'm down there. The other thing that impresses me is, is you'll notice that these applicants are not represented by, by anyone, yet they still knew to go out into the community and, and have a meeting, which I think is, which is important. And frankly, I guess the issue here is they're not really changing what's been occurring. It's just the fact they did not realize they, they needed this, this particular permit. So if you read the planning commission write-up and, and the minutes, you'll, you'll see as they go through there, the, the issue at that point was primarily noise. And if you look the, under conditions, number two, under conditional use permit, and number one, under the assembly use issue, they talk about no amplification of music or use of speakers will be permitted except within the main enclosed building after ten P.M. And that was in direct response to what the, what the neighbors had said. And if you read the minutes of the planning commission, you'll see quite a lively debate back and forth amongst the planning commissioners about, about that, because they were specifically concerned about this. But as you read it, you, you see it kinda was going one way or the other, but ultimately, it was eleven to zero in favor of it. So having said all that, I, I think they've, they've done a good job at it. I think that you'll, you'll see that the, that the applicant is aware that violating these, these conditions would in fact cause them to lose their conditional use permit process, or conditional use permit. They, they admit that in, in the statements here. I, I think they've done a good job of reaching out. I think that place used to be pretty bad. It was overgrown, there were boat trailers and things back in the corner there. And, and, and I'm, I'm pleased to say, and I know it, it kinda stops right there, but you can curve around to the right in the back, and it goes underneath the bridge. So it's, 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 there's a good bit of noise coming off of the, the bridge as well. So I would, I would move approval on this based on what they've done. I wasn't finished.
He's, he's still a rookie, you know?
I was the new guy once, many years ago, too.
I needed to get a second.
I'm writing it down, Mike.
Michael's first second, he was excited. Okay, Ms. Henley.
Just a, a comment. I noticed that this one does say that there would be an annual review based on the date of the city council approval performed by the planning director of the assembly use, conditional use permit. I think that was on the previous one, too. So it will be reviewed to make certain that everything is working out.
And that, that was in the comments, if you read the?
I think that's important, that people know.
Okay, John.
Like Councilman Wood, I went out and looked at the property, met with the gentleman. It is really a neighborhood asset. I don't know how else you could describe it.
Yeah.
That is, was just a, a super facility that they have there. And if you haven't been there, you should go visit it.
Okay, okay, God.
I was just gonna add, I also visited the property, and I can't wait to take my grandchildren out there. I think it's a great, great place, great asset.
I'd like to add that my enthusiasm for the second was supported by the fact that I also had the opportunity to meet with the applicants. And it is a very exciting project.
I also had the opportunity to meet with the applicants. And it is a very exciting project, and, and I think will be an enhancement to our city.
Enthusiasm is welcome at this time.
Yes.
All right. At this point, the vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the application of K&amp;T Inc. doing business at Ballyhoos.
Okay, at this point, we have no appointments. Do we have any unfinished business?
I'm sorry, so, excuse me, we did have Ms. Messner sign up on appointments, however-
There are no appointments.
We're not, we're not doing appointments today.
Okay. Any, okay, any new business? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.